Good evening. Today is the regular board meeting, June 23rd. And the time is 6:04 PM. And point of notice due to COVID-19 social disreputation, consideration that help the Village Dixie residents, the meeting will be held both physical and virtual. Participants will move to the Village Hall participation to join the meeting virtually. See the information below. Any event presumably does not work, a form of the corporate authority will be in person at the Village Hall campus. Please note that public comment will be allowed at the end of the meeting. Until public comment is called, all persons who are not members of the Board of Trustees should move themselves until the public comment portion of the meeting. Anybody wishing to submit electronic public comments should email me, Kurt Garden, at Kurt at VillageDixie.com, or no later than one hour before we start the meeting. Here, I have anybody that send an email, trustee Frank Mills here. Trustee Weston.
Here.
Trustee Tyson.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
In.
Trustee McFadden.
There.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
I'm here.
Also present is the Village President, Mr. Gerald Roberts.
Here.
John Thompson, Economic Development.
Here.
Director of Cores, Tiff Tweebill.
Here.
Fire Liaison, Hebe Kane.
Here.
Kimani, IT. Corporation Councilor, I don't even pronounce the name. Addison? No, did not? Also present is Village President, Anita Darden. Next to the stand for the pledge, lead you.
Pledge and lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Lord Jesus, help us to come and say thank you for all that people watching this show. Go continue to let us do good for the village, continue to let us stand strong for the village, stand together for the village, continue to let us always have the village and mindset. And just continue to watch over us, let us continue to love one another and others, and continue to help and do the job that you want us to do. Let us make it happen, safe and meaningful, meaningful to me.
Department of Judiciary, can you write in the Department of Justice?
John Thompson. Good evening, trustees. So since, pardon me. Just about a few things that I need to mention about, one of the things where we received notice that the grant for the emergency generator missed the deadline, and so we're going to have to wait for the next available grant. That was approximately $300,000, but we did have documentation that we had to have to turn in the grants to the portal that we needed to, so that's postponed. The other letters, these are our sent emails to all of your Department of Trustees. We've been talking about these. We're working on Sam's account that we have to have to acquire our grants, and we have been in formal writing that these are a couple of the problems that we're having getting these grants prepared. We're going to speak on it, but we can't get into the system to even put the grants through, but we will incorporate the people and the representatives necessary and the contacts that we have. So we're not giving up on the grants, we're just giving up on this that we were given.
What was the grant that we missed out?
That was the grant that went on putting FEMA, emergency grant.
It was over there.
None of it took that.
No, I think it was over. From the county, from the county.
Oh, from the county, I'm sorry. Kim Kaminsky.
Tim Kaminsky.
Kim.
Kim.
Norwensky. I will have the, I have her name.
You got some information on?
Yes.
Phone number?
I'll have that for you. I'll have that for you.
Phone address?
The whole contact, email address, and everything.
You have it for me, Mark?
Yes, sir. The other grant for $112,000, those just things that we're working on to get that completed, and we will be following up and have all of that information, the engineers will turn in the information to me, and their bill is included in the grant, so that's the good grant to be awarded. Kagan City Plumbing turned into a bill that we're pending public for superintendent's approval on. Also, last but not least, 144th Street has a problem for Wood Street to Robey, I think that is.
It's really not the whole section there, I would say from this, uh... Wood Street. Lincoln. Lincoln. It's just that one block, you know, because...
Well, if Eric could do the whole thing, it would be cheaper to do the whole from Robey to Winchester, because if they just don't patch that one section, they're going to bring out the same equipment, so might as well, and then the section doesn't stop there, stops at the back of Winchester, the alley of Winchester. So maybe we should just do that whole section there to...
So from Lincoln to Winchester.
Lincoln to Winchester.
Right. That's what I was going to say, it's about the block, City Woods, Woods, and two blocks. Ain't nothing wrong with that part of it, you know, it's coming from Woods to Lincoln, that's okay.
Yes.
Then from Winchester to around corner, that's okay. So it's just that one block.
Well, it's in a Tiff area, so if we put a letter to the Tiff attorneys to request that's approved, that it could be approved to be done, that we can get that done immediately. Then that would be, that's a question here, we're talking to 144.
It's not Wood Street.
Wood Street.
We'll see, we'll see. We talk, yeah. Winchester, because it's all two up right here, and that craters, people driving through the yard, and the gas, and get around, and the puddle.
That's it.
And if some of the trustees went down and waited, you all probably have seen that. And one of our trustees busted three local units out of control. And one of the residents busted a ramp and he had to do the same things, big puddles needing to be tore up and regraded.
And last but not least, we have two notifications for economic development. One is 146 South Wood Street to 142 South Wood Street, and the one uses the truck parking. It has a, it has a cement ride area, and it probably has gravel parking in the back, but I was going to have to pull it off, the switch would go on, make sure it beats all of our, it's in a zone I-1, so it's in commercial zoning, but if you do it, the trustees don't like to see that happen. They already, they just wanted to inquire before they spend the money, and they're, they're sending drawings and everything. I thought we sent them out, but the attachment didn't show, so I would like to just extend this. And Mr. 147 Cooper Property for the development of the corner donut shop, Cooper, it's in the two houses, east of Levitt.
They have a steel zone.
This sole commercial right there is that strip.
You talking about that big vacant lot?
Yes, four pin numbers there, and then two houses, and then it's the other area with balloon shop and everything. This is just east of that, one block east.
Your trustees, you all...
She said a balloon shop?
No.
No, one block east of that.
They want to do a donut butt?
He wanted to do a commercial.
He was also helping tonight.
But that's how we'd like to just, at the next, maybe they'll just present it, I have the documentation. Pete was going to show up at 5:00 if he couldn't, he didn't make it, so just do it at the next presentation.
And then, you know, just to let the trustees know, I did talk between earlier, we need to get with the guys over there, the highway.
Yes.
They had to see if they're going to fix, want for a bail.
Yes.
The reason why we didn't do it, because they were still driving any trucks up and down in there.
That's true.
So, I mean, they still...
They haven't stopped yet.
So, you know, when they get through with that, we're going to make sure that they come over this way and...
Make a formal, write a letter.
Right.
And then we'll start again, and then you sign off on it, and then that will be on file, we can email it to powers that be and have it on file, and then get it signed.
Because I knew when he was over there posing, he gave you that old strip, so don't leave us wrecking.
We can be questioned, no problem. End of my report, thank you.
Tell me again about, okay, we lost the, what's the $300,000 grant, that was for FEMA, you said?
It's from FEMA. What happens with the grants now, they change all the ways you apply, so you have to have everything that they need to put the application in, even to put your pre-application in. So if you don't have the information that they need, you can't even apply, because you're just, they're going to just kick you out, you can't get into the system to fill out the application.
So that means that that was due to the not having current audits, is that...
No, well, part of it is, we have to have a SAMs and a GADA number. That SAM's number is a federal government number, and the GADA number is what they use to extend to other grants. So you have to be able to connect to the portals to apply for grant funding. So if you can't get into the portals, you can't even apply for the grant funding. We had gotten into the portal and got to the point where it says we need to know the GADA information.
So they don't have a government number?
We don't have none.
Oh, really?
And it has to be, it has to have certain attachments to it, for us to be approved as a government entity. So these things are what we're working on, and they can't happen overnight, but this is something that just didn't take place. We weren't, our numbers were not registered as they should have been a while back. So now we're just making up these new projects and finding that we have to have data to follow through. So instead of wasting a lot of time trying to do a grant that's going to get kicked back, we can't even get in on it anymore.
So what we got to do, we got a GADA number and a SAM, and we have all this stuff.
I've already talked to a couple of people that we have mentioned before, and they had a team that was going to call us. Also, we have to have, CMAT is going to work with us, they have an agency within the agency that helps with these things, so we're working on it, and just as soon as they get the approval moved forward from their provision, they'll move forward to try to keep clear these documents, numbers, and data that we have to have to apply for grants and get these funds. Now, we have a lot of money out there available, but the longer it takes us to get it, the more we have less of an opportunity to get the things that we have. So that's SAM, that's a main necessity to get to where we really need to be to be able to be approved.
So I know it is something that goes way back, and you started...
But, no.
But what I need to do, what we need to do, is get that number as soon as possible. Whatever we need to work on, whatever we need to contact, we need to get that squared away as soon as possible, because we can't afford to keep losing our grants.
Just as the state said, that they will hold those grants, because they see we're making progress, they're not going to give us the grant yet, but they're going to hold the funds, because they know that we're trying to get our documentation together. So we have to get to that status with each one of these individual grants, and some of them are small, some of them are large, some don't even have to have GADA numbers. Those grants we go after, CBDG is not a GADA number, and you don't have to have it maybe for the investing cook, so we're going to have to look at doing other grants to get around that right now. But the funds that are there, we have to get those GADA numbers done immediately.
Give me the contact, give people the city laws, evidence, forms, yes.
I have it on there, I made copies for you tomorrow.
Please, because I don't even have the, city laws, nothing, say they set that generator money to the side, we ain't losing nothing. I talked to whoever else I need to talk to, get this thing together.
So we never had GADA numbers, or did they expire?
We had GADA, and we had SAMs, but they have to be renewed every, every other year. And our number was not renewed.
It never renewed in the last finstration.
So now we're trying to reestablish, because we didn't have our data.
So in other words, we lost the party in 2015, or '16?
'17.
Okay, thank you. Oh, well, thank you.
It goes back, so we're now working on it, we will have that available for the future. So as soon as we get that, we know we're going to be happy. Happy days, let's keep it moving.
Okay, that's, that's good. When you tell us about these streets and what, that doesn't, that does not involve the, no, the, just economic, that's, or, no, you're...
I mean, code.
The, what's your department code? It doesn't affect...
No, that's, it's for infrastructure and public works.
Okay.
And, you know, we have those problems, nature calls that says, like, this goes by the tree and not get down and crack the street or whatever, those things happen, and that's public works and...
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mayor.
What'd you say, where's this going? 300,000?
Yeah, that was approximately $300,000, including engineering and all...
Director of Cores, questions, last, Tiff, Tweebill.
Good evening, Mayor, residents, board trustees. We are in the middle of working very hard at getting the codes done and the permits done, so residents will be noticing that we are getting a lot of stuff done now, and they're coming in and making changes to all the money that they go, all the different problems that are coming out. We still need to work on grass cutting, but we need to cut with that, so we need to look at, try, we need a part-time person to come in and cut, not cut grass, not cut grass, but define for the... We also need to be cleaning up more of the trash that's in the village, tires, and old cars that are still sitting around, so we're working on that for those parts too. And people are moving into all, to these homes that are not residents, they're the favorite people that are just coming into homes, so we got to go around, check on these homes, these abandoned homes out here now, so that we can find out how rare and rare, and so we might be able to lock them up, or lock the doors up, or void them, that kind of thing. And probably, we still plan on the homes, the property over there on 137th Street, how we're going to move it, we're going to move that pan down, and also the property on Bush Street, we're going to start working on that. So we're looking, thank you.
Cooper Street?
Yes.
You can give it to Chief. Give it up with the Chief, let's see if we have county, we have the, a lot of town, yeah. We have, we don't have a roof, it's going to stand, give that signal. Yeah, give the Chief, Chief can help if you guys, get the county, Stevie can come in and start, you can offer, we also got to do what you call...
274?
A demo. Demo equipment, yeah. We got, we can do over on 105. On where your first video will watch. Also, we had kids, Mr. Bubba got on it, but he needs a board company to go back, do the other three windows on 142nd Street. I'll get you the addresses right before the circle. Over there, because you got kids trying to go in there and spot, and you got the other one in the circle drive, he going in there, police walking in, he saw some guys going in and out, I'm not trying to spot, so we got to get him out.
All right.
Are you ready?
Thank you, Madam clerk, to the mayor's trustees, the borough heads, and most importantly, residents of Dixmoore. The fire EMS camp last week was a success. We well exceeded our expectations of 30 individuals, we had about 40 individuals there, so it was really, really, really well orchestrated, and I appreciate everyone in Prairie State and those who came, and I'm happy to say that Dixmoore Residence was given the opportunity for employment at an area fire program and be sponsored for the fire campaign, so we do have a success story out of that for Dixmoore Residence, so that's a, that's a great opportunity, so. In addition to that, we want to build off that, with a vocational program will be coming to our areas, our areas, school districts between Prairie State, University of Illinois I and S I, and Homeland Security with the U S C money, so over the course of the next two weeks, meeting with all the local state representation to, to meet with Homeland Security, if they're counting to help us draw down those funds, so we can bring the monies into the classrooms early on, so we can get exposure to the kids at the high school level, and then move on to the college and get job opportunities, and I think Dixmoore also, those also people that surround the communities will have a great opportunity to be a part of this, as the plan's over at, right, the beginning phases, but it's all about getting word out there and jobs for public safety, because it's truly, truly a epidemic shortages right now, and police fire EMS, ever since, you know, 2020, the world changed, and you change, folks taking jobs like this, so we want to get the exposure out for, we have opportunity, have good paying jobs with benefits and pensions and things like that, so hopefully load off the rest of us, so. Other than that, any questions, if not, we're married. Thank you.
Just to let the board and Mr. President know, the Chief is also in the meeting.
He can do his own point, I'm ready.
Okay, I just want to say, good afternoon, Mr. President, board, I only got two things, and one thing probably is really good, those two, for us, we have been fully, I guess, we're with Cal Cal now, so our whole, this center is with Cal Cal now, and we pretty much operate at 88% to 90%, but you know, we still got a few things in it, but you know, they get the next week or so, with, along with praying help, all of that, all of that, we take care of, and also ask from the next board meeting that wants the investigation to go with the three or four people that we have, I ask that you all consider bringing them on board and hiring, because we're really short, but right now, that's all I have. Thank you.
Eddie Cassino, gentle.
Come for a break?
Yes.
So I did have a brief meeting today with Superintendent Darden, and so he, because speed bump is coming to slow situations down for our streets, he was very concerned about us getting our streets, some of our streets were clear, but the mayor spoke on that already, so I guess that's being handled, or the city passes it being handled. And we needed to get some further information, he was asking about information regarding our needs for the EPA water situation, so that we will be in compliance, so we did reach out to get information for that, so hopefully we'll have it soon, so we will be ahead of the game before, you know, we have any situation, so we'll just follow up on that EPA, as far as our water risk core and compensation.
John, did you receive any help?
Okay.
And what we are doing, I'll make sure, he said he had put one on Mr. Darden's desk, but I'll make sure that he did, because I seen it the other day, we had about three, John got it like two, three, and so here, we just, he just got, you know, things, so he did say something about, you know, or something that we all already knew, we had to clean the tank and paint the tank, the guy said make the tank look presentable, clean up around it, and he did clean up around it, I would like to, first of all, thank the county, Stevie and Bailey, along with the EPA, they removed 7,000 tires, that was back there, we got all that out here, we had 7,000 tires, so that's, that comes from years of power, but then, on top of that, we just got all the tires from around the town, period, that keep down the mosquito of the west side. So, yeah, we'll make sure Mr. Darden, or any other trustees that want to get that to report, make sure everyone did, so we can get that tank taken care of before, before the time comes, so we ain't pushing it, running, jumping.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I understand.
They're ahead of the game.
Jumping all around, like, who knows, we got it off, and we waved behind the guy, took a lot of work out.
Thank you.
Our board of directors, we're going to take it to the next meeting, we have the bills, June 23rd, 2022. So, do you have enough of you?
Those was $66,298.44.
The biggest of the, all the money that they're speaking, we got sent to every time at portals, that, you ever known it? No?
No, it's not on here.
Okay.
I'll understand if you also...
So you didn't, did you get the trustee, Big Ben?
No. Now we... I'm definitely putting a deal box in the board.
No, that's come, come on your email.
That community specialist, it looks like we have them every month, what, it's, maybe the chief is on there, maybe he can tell us, the community specialist...
About what?
$285, $285. We seem to, we might have a contract with them or something, no, we have a fight after, you know, we discussed this a lot.
Well...
We have a committee.
Yes. Yes, we had one last week, Smith's Trading Park, and the Freedom Home refused to come and get it, and to pick up remains, the county refused for us to come pick up remains, and said we had to bring it to them, we don't have no way to get it to them, so...
That's not our offices, right? What they going to put in?
They ain't putting them squad.
Right, that's, that's true, so nobody would come in, did their families then have insurance?
Well, with, with the one, I don't know if this is the individual from last week, but I know with the one from last week, what the police did, they got all the family in from... the family information.
Okay.
She did have insurance. They got insurance information to put all that with the people that came to pick up the body.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, uh, that's where we going now with, uh, you know, this where we went with it last week.
Okay.
So now if they send us a bill, then what we have to do is. Send to the, no, that might be someone else.
Yeah, you know what?
We got them, you know, individuals now with, with the weather, COVID, with everything and everything going around, they falling out everywhere, they fall on the village.
Okay.
You know, to, because we can't just let them be.
I said it to you.
You know, so. We, yes, I mean, we probably can find out, uh, I don't even know if we can find out the family.
Um, in fact, I did speak with, um, the chief on that, um, because I was thinking the same thing as trustee Smith about, you know, how many, like wow. So, um, he did give me, he told me what it was, but, um, I asked the same questions about the whole insurance situation and, you know, so that's, I just, we have to do, but we need, we need to figure out.
I mean, funny, maybe he gets rid of something.
Well, I mean, it's like.
You can't leave him there.
No, I get it.
I told the chief, you know, because I, he came back, I, I got a call from, uh, one of the residents at the Trading Park and they was, you know, kind of deserted around. Uh, and she stated that the police ain't doing their job and all that. He called, I went over there and talked to him and she told me what's going on. Well, all the police, it's called a county and a county are hard, you know, a hard time. So we kind of walking through, uh, trustee Webster took me over there and of course, you know, a few people possess, we come, we come from the county. And, uh, they kind of told, you know, explained to me the way to go about doing it.
Okay.
But again, with that particular individual last week, we did get, uh, the, uh, all the family information as well as she hit, found out she had insurance and stuff. So we put the family, had the family information put on, on the paperwork too. So they sent us something, they were sending, make sure the family did, you know, that they got insurance, that's what it's for. Because that's what the start do. Fruit Home don't do it. Fruit, called two Fruit Homes and they rejected.
The family has to call.
They rejected, they say they not picking her up.
Only if the family had a, if the family make arrangements.
Family has to make a call.
They haven't said at all.
So they don't know where body will go, yes, we went to.
We went to the county.
Well, mayor, what, what I have problem with is looking at the invoice, okay? It, it doesn't say an address, it doesn't say anything. As far as I'm concerned, they could just be staying, uh, because they don't pay it anyway. I'm, I'm, because they don't have the address or anything, it's just, uh, cost of two eighty-five.
And that's why I made the policy because it didn't say anything.
Do it have a number? It got to have a number.
Well, it does have, uh, transport to M E office. What is M E?
M E.
Okay, that's what they, they sent it to. And they do have a number, but I guess what I'm saying, they don't have the address where they picked it up from. I mean, because we have to approve it, but there's no address to say, hey, I picked it up from, uh.
They don't have the address where they picked it up.
No, they do not. And, and they picked it up on the, uh, the thirteenth of June, which is a Monday. That's the one you're talking about?
That's the one I'm talking about.
Okay.
So, so it probably, it's probably not on that slip, but the slip that was done. So, uh. I mean, what we, I mean, it's up to you all. We can still make a motion, pay, this way it go. We, whether the family picked it up or not, we're going to, because we, I mean, we can't let us, you know, we couldn't let it stay here like that. But at the same time, what we can do is we can have the chief to contact, because he still had a family contact. And we can have their contact, they're waiting for with that over to the family.
Yeah, because we've been talking about this for months, how we're gonna work it out, um, so.
And perhaps maybe we can, uh, uh, have a company come out and you can.
I think.
You know, talk.
I think the contract.
Either way, we could, uh, I don't.
Well, I'm, because we, we.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying, yeah, yeah, so.
All right, well, we need to work on it because we've been talking about this for months. Is the chief still on or he's gone? Well, you just let him know because he has information, so that's fine. Thank you, mayor.
Trustee, uh, you found out?
Yes. I was wanting to say what we actually need is an itemized bill from these people whenever they have to remove a body. They need to give us an itemized list, where did we remove it from, the address, the name of the person. And we also need any other information we can get as far as the relatives are concerned. When my brother died at home, the corner came out, they said he definitely dead and he left. Okay, they did not pick him up, they didn't take him anywhere. We had to contact the funeral home to come and get him. Now, the only way they will remove is that there's no one else at that residence. But if you have their information, which no one should have, emergency contact or something, you contact those people. Now, they're responsible for having their loved one removed, not the village.
The sister was there, I think.
They don't have to sign a paper. They're relative, the sister is there.
No, they won't, nope. Nope, they, where you go? Me, me, me and T was there, what, or two hours to try to get that figured out?
And we didn't itemize this from, we didn't itemize this from people that picked it up by.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you got to add up to.
He used to work for the, but, but what I'm saying, we was there and we called like three or four different people and they were like, because we had some individuals that was there that was trying to make it look, if the village don't care about, don't care about, they just gonna leave away and, and all that stuff. At the same time, we called all around, we had to do it then for them people to come out, we had to really pull strings to get them to come back out because they said they wanted to come back out.
Did she live, did the person live long before?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sister was here. But the sister.
Oh, the sister's not the time.
The sister came here about the time. Because you know, check on her, that's, that's where he found her. Well, we will, I will, uh, again, I'll talk to the chief tomorrow, uh, because that sound like the resident that, uh, went at your place and we have the chief to reach out to the family and check on the insurance card and have them to send a bill to whoever backed the insurance, whoever. But we, you know, we just couldn't be, be forever.
Yeah.
And super hot outside, it was hot in the house, it was air went on and, and, uh, like I say, it was trying to make it look like, oh, this is what happened to the residents when they passed the, and it needs more and more, the trustee was even laying there and all that, who does and stuff. They had cameras and all kind of. So we stayed over there and we sent the chief back on the phone and back out and stayed over there too.
Till they get quiet?
Yeah.
So Michelle is our new, who's Michelle? The town?
That's me.
Well, no, I thought, I thought, no, yeah, I was. I mean, because I know you had.
Well, that's who handles a lot of our, uh, the, the, uh, real estate.
Right, that's what I just did, John.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The, the person.
Right.
Okay, so, so, so where we at now? Looking for a motion for the.
I have a, no, I'm, I'm not quite done though. I do have a, a conversation or a comment to make and it's in regards to, um, advance alarm and I've asked for itemizations and I didn't want to go this route, but we get the same invoice every week or every bill period and it has the same thing. I know they're here, I know they're working, but we cannot have a bill with the exact same thing every bill period. It has, I mean, what are you doing? If you're purchasing equipment, we need invoices. If you're doing work, we need to know what work you're doing. I do know that there are some things that, that we need to get if that's the person that's gonna handle our, um, continue to do our alarms and computers and internet services, but we cannot, um, continue with the same invoice every bill period in the same amount. Is there a contract? Do you have a contract with the individual or the company? Maybe we need to look at getting a contract.
So you, you saying we get a contract.
Well, I don't know which way is gonna be more, most beneficial. Um, we, I decide you know that we have to make calls like after hours, um, you know, and, yeah, so, I mean, if the work is being done, they need to be paid, but for accountability, we need to have an itemization of the invoice. Yes. Because every invoice says the exact same thing.
You get an itemized bill going, you get an itemized bill going with everybody, it's not, uh, you, you make sure that those have.
And mayor, I asked for a meeting, I never got it.
With me?
Yeah, yes, sir. But it's okay, with me.
Will you read it, thank you?
Okay, okay.
Maybe I'll try.
Well, I'm not available tomorrow, but we'll schedule a meeting and then we won't forget about it, okay?
Say it up.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
No problem. Trustee?
Okay, also, um, the work has been done. I made a request for a bill that we had a couple of months ago that is coming out of our account automatically. And it's for Norton. I was sent, well, when I asked, you a lot of you told me to see Fred. Fred said he didn't know, he sent me to the clerk, the clerk hasn't signed a deal. But in the meantime, the money is still being taken out of our account. I'm still trying to find out where the money.
I think McCaskill explained something about Norton. It's a system that's, that, uh, we have, it's the, uh, security to stop virus and so forth that we have in our, um, mother boy system.
Now, that's the one that Fred told me we no longer have. That was by the old administration, it was your payment.
Okay, well, Fred, if Fred said we no longer have it, we don't need it, then we need to let the treasurer.
And that's the problem.
Take care.
Everyone keeps sending me to the next person. We need to find out, I mean, if, if we got that kind of money to throw away, I know some homeless people that use it. Let's get some sandwiches and some socks and stuff. Because that makes no, that makes no sense.
Get us.
But that's the whole thing, it's coming out of our account automatically. Who okayed them to be that money?
If, if, if there's Norton system and it's coming out of your account automatically, it's something that came from the previous administration that's came, came down.
And we need to find out what it is and stop.
Because it's a lot of stuff that was still on there that we still trying to get a hold of to stop.
Well, this is what we need to stop because we know it's happening.
That, uh, yeah, yeah, it's a lot of stuff we, we gotta.
Well, it's been three months now, I'm still waiting for answers. HR told me to see Fred, like Fitz told me to see Fred. And Fred told me to see Juanita. Juanita don't know about the money coming out of the account, it shouldn't be McCaskill. There's a, it's a circle.
If we don't need Norton, Dave McCaskill just need to cut it off.
And that's the whole thing, but he don't know who authorized it.
One second, that Norton system that comes out of our account every month, uh, do we still have that or what is that about?
They have it after a year, not every month, five hundred some dollars a year.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, so, uh, Irving, we already have a firewall with, uh, Irving, so.
So why we paying more?
Tell McCaskill, shut it down. But see, here's the other, here, here's the other thing, trustee, because we just fell into something else. That's why I say, you know, with this administration, I'm not signing no contracts that's gonna take me out of my term.
Yeah.
See, that's what's been going on. There's one contract that has taken, I, I, I don't think I say the name of the company, but they has taken us out term after term after term.
No, I didn't say that.
P S N is going up. So, yeah, if, if, if you don't shut it off at a certain time, then you automatically got to stick with it for another year, another two years or something like that. But the contracts that, since we've been in office, they automatically shut down after my term is up. That way, if I don't run again or if I don't get in again, it won't proceed and carry over to the next administration if not knowing. See, a lot of our stuff got shredded, everything got shredded up. So we know what we had, what we didn't have. We didn't know that until like, for instance, you're looking at all this now, Norton system. There was some other stuff that was going on and we tried to shut down. Uh, the one place called Red or something, we found out that was something that went all the way from Norton administration and just keep going on and on and on. So we working on that stuff now. So it's.
Well, let's, let's work on.
There's Norton system.
We know it's coming out automatically.
We would let McCaskill know.
So we paid, we paid the whole year, but it says that it's a family plan. It's not the village plan, it's a family plan. So we're paying for someone's Norton service at that home. We need to put a stop to it, A S A.
Move them.
Um, I guess McCaskill, we had, we need to discuss this with county because looking at the Illinois Public Rest Fund, um, I, it looks to me as if we have like some, well, those compensations, anybody see that? And we not, I mean, what, what you say?
We have to pay them.
No, we have, no, I know, we have to pay them. I'm not saying not to pay them, but we had this, uh, this eight thousand ninety-two dollars worth of workers' comp. So, I mean, who is it for? And that's, that's what we need to know. I, I know we have to pay, we have to pay.
And it probably went up because.
No, I don't even know the winner.
Possible, it had a big didn't pay, that's probably like eight dollars some dollars or so.
Well, that could be possible, but it, it only says from, yeah, well, August the first, um.
It's your premium.
So it's your premium.
And it's your workers' comp, you got to pay workers' comp.
Man, okay. August, okay, so in other words, we pay this month. All right. Or is this, uh, issue that took place, the plan, he's not here answering this question.
Yeah, but that's what this works.
Right, it's workers' comp, I know that. Was that because of the incident or is that a, or a month? That's probably, but, but, okay.
Well, a lot of our premiums don't be good. A lot of our premiums don't include.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I do know.
The, um, yeah, right, yeah. The inheritor.
Well, first we got a credit.
A lot of stuff.
We got a bet?
We got a credit. Workers' comp was eight thousand dollars. Then we got a credit on one thousand five, wait, two dollars. We got another credit of five hundred and fifty-four dollars. So that was for your eight, it was workers' comp bills. So we only owe five thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars. We got two, catch a thousand dollars in credit. Show them.
Let me see it.
It says August workers' comp compensation.
Okay, um, I guess with the motion, if you'd like. What's that news?
No.
Yeah.
If you're like for August. Okay, okay, never mind, never mind. I see.
So if there's no more questions, I, I motion with you.
Thank you. Second for bills?
What's that?
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Smart, uh, Frank Hughes?
Yes.
Trustee West?
Yes.
I see, I see. Next on this is Mr. Boykum. He's going to wait to the next meeting. Um, no coordinates and no, uh, resolutions. Next is discussion authorization approval, approval, Lieutenant Counselor Trustees, Delgado Law Group LLC.
Where is number nine?
Number nine.
Okay, it was open for discussion. I'd like to.
Let that motion second.
I like the motion that we will have for discussion.
I'll say it tomorrow.
Motion tomorrow. Trustee McFadden. Second, our trustee Williams, trustee Williams.
Discussion.
You vote?
Yes.
Trustee Baxter?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Discussion.
Okay. I want to open for discussion because this is basically for council of the trustees. And I would like the Delgado group to represent the trustees. In my opinion, they have proven that they're trustworthy. They've been able to take care of quite a few things that we have going on. Uh, the most recent one is the one that we had going on with, uh, Harvey, who they really came through for us or not. So I'm ready to have the trustees represent the body.
Do you have any discussions?
Well, only, well, we.
Yeah.
Really?
Well, we already have this, um, it was voted on last meeting. But, um, I guess the discussion that I would have, and I, you're saying, which it's really, it's already been voted on and approved, but I was looking at the Delgado groups, uh, just because we've been paying them for all this time to just complete the sensitive legal matters that they're handling with us now because it looks as if we are double paying because we have to start all over. But it doesn't matter because it's already been voted for. Um, and I agree with you that I, Delgado and Attorney Fesselli, they worked very good with, for the village. And they had already started working for us and they, we have some litigations that he says that really, that is tightly sensitive. So I was, I'm agreeing that we could have kept them until they completed the litigations that they're currently, that they were doing. And something else that I guess the trustees had looked at, um, even though we have them now, uh, that in the contract, it was like a hundred and sixty-five dollars per hour for administrative staff and paralegal. Uh, well, a hundred and fifty per hour for a law clerk. And you probably get correct. But then it says sixty-five dollars per hour for services performed. That was dug out. They charged sixty-five dollars for a law clerk. This company charges one fifty per hour.
We changed that, trustee. That's changed. The rates match. All the rates match.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, the most recent engagement letter had all the rates that matched.
I, I didn't get the new, the.
It was the same, exact same rate structure.
Okay, I, I guess, I don't know, maybe the other trustees got it. That's what I.
We circulated it before the last board game.
I ain't get it.
Yeah, we sent it out before the last board game. It's exact same.
It's the same.
Exact same rate.
Okay, you're, you're having, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, man. Because I, I was only going by this, what I see now.
Sure, and that had changed, trustee.
So it's, it's the same.
Exact same rate structure.
So how would this, although we already have them, so I, I'm.
Can I just touch? I thought it was done. Earlier I thought you were, but as you are not. You know, he's been handling the business, um, prior to what, what we mean, uh, so far, he's been doing a good job. If it was not for him, I wouldn't even.
Oh, I, oh, well, I, I never met that guy before the committee. But we met Tiff.
But I met Fesselli and I met Tiff. We have brought it to you all.
Yeah, because it was good. Fesselli brought Tiff. And, and that's why they're working together.
Working together.
But it's, oh, they are not.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree.
It is the mayor's.
Oh, you, and we all.
We agree with that. I mean, I, like I said, I like Fesselli.
Oh, I.
He been handling this business with me and everybody.
And you both.
So that's just how I see it. You know, I don't know the other people that, that are here.
No, no, I, I agree with you one hundred percent.
We didn't really know Fesselli. I thought it was Delgado.
Yeah, can I just ask you a question?
Of course.
If mayor. Yeah. Only thing that, that I had a problem.
Yeah.
Is, and, and you know, I know you are just swamped, okay?
Sure.
And it looked as if you didn't have time for this village. And I mean, I understand.
Yeah.
Because you're swamped, okay? And a lot of our meetings, you had not been attending because you were swamped. So that's what I had a problem with.
For sure.
Because when we first got in office, and the mayor said this himself, and we all agreed that you were attending all of our meetings. And all of a sudden, we were having attorneys that didn't even know what was going on. And that bothered me. Because you know you've always been there for.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
And all of a sudden, like I said, I understand because we, we are talking about this.
I understand.
That I said, well, do you have time for us? And I expect to see you.
I understand.
Like, uh, trustee Mitchell just said she feels comfortable. We all feel comfortable with you. And.
Every time I talk to you, I have.
And that's, so that's what we look.
Understood. I have one conflict and we will have somebody set up to set up to make that conflict. I will be a, I've never charged you guys anything for committee meeting. I've been to some. Um, I am.
Well, the committee needs, I don't count that.
I do it by Zoom.
No, no, that's not.
But the four knees, I'll have one conflict, somebody throw in the firm cover in case of conflict. Otherwise, I will be here for your meetings, barring family emergency, health crisis, something.
Well, okay.
And call me, as I always say, feel free to call me. And for that piece of litigation, if it's so far along and I know where it's at, if it's so far along and it's better for the prior village attorney to handle it than the prior village attorney should handle it. If it's at a point where there is a break and you can switch it over, then we can discuss that as well. But the first interest has to be the interest of the village. And without the essence for the village with any piece of litigation or real estate matter, for example, um, should stay with that lawyer to make it the most efficient. For example, the Harvey matter that just kind of got resolved a couple of days ago. I think it was well done. A lot of people put their hands in there. And it's good that it's done because now that, that's one more thing off our vertical plane collectively. But for this one case, which I think I know you're talking about, um, we'll look into it, find out where we're at, and make an informed decision in conjunction with you all as corporate authorities about where it goes, if that's fair.
And, and that's fair. That was only my concern with, right, guys, no, not, well, people know, with, um, they had already started working on some of our sensitive litigations or a sensitive, tiny, tiny sensitive.
Yeah.
Litigations. And that was, that was my concern because if, no, they handled it. The, the whole firm handled it. But, uh, that was my, that is my concern. And, and you being here, those were my.
Understood, got it. And we'll have some conflict, if I have a conflict, I'll let you guys know in advance. I'll call all the trustees beforehand. I'll make sure the attorney who will be covering in the event of a conflict is there. And then you all know. But I will talk to each of you individually to see if you have any concerns with what the meeting is.
And that's what you used to do. And all of a sudden, it stops, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Trustee, what else? I just wanted to say something. And I don't need to talk that much from the talk. Jimmy's been good for us. He's been there with water problem. Most of the problems that we've had, he's been there for us.
Yes.
I think that he's the person that we need to be doing this because of the type of relationship that we have with him. And to true his word, we continue on this, so he will.
Oh, I, I agree one hundred percent.
And, I mean, I'm just, just back and forth, back and forth. I'm just tired. I like to take this indefinitely. And just put it to him. Let's just.
Well, did you have something to say?
I did, yeah. So, uh, my, my comment would be that a lot of things, and I think I discussed with Attorney Fesselli, I felt like we found out on the back. I don't like making, I don't like voting to find out information that I think I should have known front end. Um, I think that, I don't know where the communication broke down and everything rushed. Some things we were kind of rushed to make decisions, which we do not one hundred percent aware of all the circumstances around. And I just feel like, you know, I do have a vote. It's my vote. And my vote, I, I represent my vote and the people of this village. So for me to vote blind, it's not good. I don't feel good about it.
Um, let me ask you this. What are you blind about?
Situations that I didn't know about until after that's been worked. And I'm not going to discuss it right now.
And trustee, I, there's never going to be a hundred percent perfect communication. And I will, if it's okay with all of you, not to elongate this discussion or any board meeting. Maybe if you made the whole meeting, I'll give you a little legal report. Not everything, it's going to be hard. One of the challenges is, one, two, three, you know, by the time you go through all the board members, it's, if you ever telephone game, maybe you get to a point where.
Where it's out there.
Yeah. And one of the things that I, um, will make sure to do is give a little bit of legal report. Even if it's in paper, if one page is in paper, just say, there's some issues outstanding. Some things are sensitive. If you're in a closed session, some things, you know, we can do it. Maybe a whole year or one page memorandum that comes out once a month about legal updates and whatnot. And that might be a way to make sure that you have more updated information. Obviously, nothing was ever going to potentially succeed. You haven't taken, you didn't comply that. But I just want to make sure that you know what you're voting on and what you're making decisions on. If directly we're into it.
Yes, it would be the board.
Fair, we'll do one, then we'll do a one-page memorandum every month at the committee, the whole meeting. So you can distribute it. Or if we don't have to meet the whole meeting, the next board meeting. And then there'll just be kind of a general updating of certain items. And if there's sensitive items, like litigation that comes up going forward or real estate, we'll just say, we're going to talk about it in closed sessions. We can't give the purchase price of a piece of property we're negotiating because it'll tip off.
But then, thank you, um, because I, I agree because we found out we're not sure the connections that we have and we were not aware of. So I agree with her.
Sure.
Yeah, so, okay, so we, we can settle all of them.
Okay, understood. So we'll do that in the future.
So can you just give the, the transcript here?
We will. Understood, yeah. We'll try to get, sometimes, you know, when a case gets filed, if we don't get served, we don't know about it for a while. And then so we'll try to, we'll check the dockets and we'll make sure that people know when there's, even if we haven't gotten served it, please be advised that X, Y, Z case is coming out.
That'd be a thing. Awesome. We had, we. I saw something on television Monday and I was like, oh, okay, this, we even knew this today. But you know, you know.
Sure.
And I don't know if that was through the, I don't remember how far back that was the transition or. But I just thought like, whoop, okay, print news.
Yeah. And if I hear anything like that, it must be the news, I will reach out to each one of you, either collectively or. Yeah, of course.
And can you let me know what it was? I mean, you ain't got a thing to do now, you're, letting me know what it was so I can, so I can see what it was.
Yeah.
So will you have a motion? I have a motion for discussion.
Motion is.
Okay.
The.
I think we have.
Do we have?
Number approval, I M L.
Do we have a court?
Just a motion for a special approval. Um, do you want to take a motion? Um, what's, they made a motion to table there? Let's see.
It's not that.
Well, first of all, we have the motion to discussion, right?
Right, and then you have a motion to table.
During the, during the table, he had asked for motion to, uh, to, during the discussion.
That all will be so.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Trustee Mitchell, second. It definitely, can you say it?
Definitely. Well, I would take one definitely, um, to the, to what we talked about.
The discussion that happened.
This whole discussion about what he was talking about.
So we already rectified this, uh, out of our, we thought we are.
We got a transition.
Tom, so yeah.
Like, even just saying the point of keep bringing it back and forth. Like you said, he's voted on something last meeting and then having back at it again. And if it come up, all somebody fill it up the way that it's coming up two weeks from now. So he said he just done.
But, but.
You know.
But one, once, uh, after this, after this meeting, if we done with it anyway, because you can only, oh, boy, that's rescinding.
That's right.
The discussion was on counsel for the trustees. What was voted on before was not counsel for the trustees.
It's not just state counsel.
It was legislative counsel.
Does, does, do we have that on?
You do, you're covered. It's just like with the last one that was here. They had a duty to, they had a duty to everyone here. Um, even though there was legislative counsel. So counsel of trustees and legislative counsel is the same thing.
So how?
Well, I think some trustees feel, so. You were catering more to the, to me.
I will make sure they. I don't want to get to know it.
I mean, the trustees can say if I'm wrong or not. I, I'm just asking, but I'm okay.
No, if that's the way the trustees feel, please talk to the trustees.
Understood, understood.
Talk to me that.
Understood, I will talk.
Because I, I, I.
I know.
I'm not trustees again. I'm not here to sit on this board where I can't be trusted. If you all feel, if y'all feel y'all don't trust me, then come and talk to me and let me know. Don't. I'm working for the, for the village. No, nothing, I'm, I'm telling you, I root for the village. It's not about me. It's not about me. I don't sit here. I never say, I, I, I. What I can say is I'm tired of running around this village working, cleaning that sin over there, cutting grass and doing all the stuff I'm doing. cutting grass and doing all the stuff I'm doing. That's what I can say, I am tired of. It's not about me, please.
I will talk to, as the.
You talk with them first, then bring it to me.
You're the CEO, he's the chair of the board. And we'll talk to the trustees first and then I'll go over there.
Because for the life of me, I don't want this board to be like the previous administration one. I don't want that. I sat through that from 2011 to now. When the, when the trustees couldn't trust the attorney because he was with the mayor and all that. Sit down and have a coffee with the trustees.
Understood.
We ain't gonna have coffee with him, I understand. I just want that, um, you know, that.
Oh, the ones who know, the people who need to speak with them, speak up. We all have our stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, so. May, may, may you with the trustee.
Understood.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, okay.
I want to move the town fort, I want to buy, I, I got two streetlights that you put up. People, people is jumping all over me about their streetlights. We need some street, we, we need to get some streetlights and some more stop signs and all this stuff down around here.
I'm glad all that.
The grass, we need, we need the center, we need to get somebody over there to clean up. And I don't know where we. So he, he made, a motion was made to table legislative council, uh, uh, indefinitely that was being brought. So it was made by trustee Webster, second by trustee, uh, Mitchell, road car.
Trustee Muse?
Captain.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And trustee McFadden?
No.
Next year.
For approval, IML, September 15th, 1822.
Oh, yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion back trustee, uh, Smith. Second back trustee Muse. I guess we have an amount at the next meeting, trustee.
Discussion.
Well, we can discuss, um, those that aren't gonna attend, I don't think, I think that we need to, if you're gonna go, you're gonna go, if you're not gonna go, then we won't allocate. That's what I would say. Because we can't, we don't need to spend people or purpose if you're not gonna participate. That, that's my idea.
And trustees, I, this is something that all of us should go to.
Definitely.
It's, it's nice, it's nice, you get to learn a lot and you get to find out one other thing. We're not the only ones that have problems. Or we're not the, the stuff that you will hear there is harmful to us. And I thank God that, uh, appreciate you putting it on the agenda, uh, trustee Muse, because on the way, rest you with me because I'm running, I'm half ooh. But I, I, I appreciate you putting that on the agenda. Because it's something that we all need to do.
And we do it early, it's a discount.
Do it early, it's a discount. We can give whatever new books they have and it helps, it helps you out a lot. It helps you out a lot.
But I agree, um, if, if, now, we should put something in place because now, I know emergencies do occur. That does. But if we do sign up, because if you can't go, you can't go. But if you sign up, make every effort, and I agree with trustee Muse, make every effort to be there because these are taxpayers' money. So, uh, if we say we go, like I said, emergency does come up, at least call the clerk and, you know, be considerate. Call her, say, I can't make it. They can always try to get somebody in that spot. But before, that didn't happen. So our residents lost money. So I agree, uh, trustee Muse, thank you very much.
So it's $310 for the members to go for the whole Thursday through Saturday. So that's 310. And if you want the hotel rooms, it's 282 for the main level and 329 for the executive level. But you gotta do it early in order to get the rates.
And you might have to share them. I mean, at least.
I share them, I'm sure.
So, so maybe they can look at their county.
I share them.
Maybe.
Like a weird movie team.
So if any of the trustees gonna stay, the mayor, if you need to try to get the rooms reserved as quick as possible.
So can we, uh, vote on it at the next meeting? Because the trustees, I'm sure some of, some of us were. Have to look at your schedule to make sure that you will be available to just say yes tonight and then find out. I don't know what's up to that.
Treasure too.
Oh, the treasure, okay.
So, so it's 310 so far and only just anywhere from, like I said, 282 main level to 329.
So trustees, y'all, y'all get together, figure it out. Really? Trustees?
You go?
Yeah, I'm going, but I'll stay down. I'll go home.
Oh, oh, you meant the stay part? You meant the stay part?
I can't stay, I get beat up.
Okay, okay, all right.
We trying to start something, uh, if she go, she go down, she ain't going down. Here she going to go shopping.
Oh. So can we, uh, at the next meeting, can we agree to approve it? And have to talk with the treasurer and the, uh, the trustees looking at their founders? And, I mean, I'm just asking.
So if you do, if we stay two nights, uh, between that, okay, give me the, I'll get the papers for you.
Thank you.
Just get two different things.
Okay, thanks.
So we still need to approve.
It's for the thousands.
So we looking for a motion to approve, uh, when we can at least get to starting the crank up. I will, uh, which is something I'm listening to go to. And clone, Mr. Muse, you all right?
Yeah.
My buddy, yeah. You be out there anyway, so I.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yeah. For the Salvation Army Red Cattle Campaign, I hope they're ready for the next meeting. Just a letter. Any citizens comment?
There are two people who would like to speak. Please go ahead and speak.
You don't want to speak?
Oh, I guess I did. I had a meeting, it was, uh.
Oh, she hasn't been there yet?
I have a mission. That's the rule is being. Yes, thank you, of the mayor and as well the trustees and the elected officials. First of all, let me say thank you for your concern and prayers. Some of you know and some of you didn't know that I have a health challenge this year. It was diagnosed in February. Who would have to help me? Dilapidated cancer, I'm a kidney and a partial right now. Thank you for your prayers all this way. Now I gotta deal with my baggage, you're not threatening this, but that's another issue. And thank you. And I'm just here to admit my support to the mayor and to the trustees and whatever capacity I can do it, do that. I will thank you for your support for True Mind. Uh, we, we are the, I think, the oldest church in this world. It's celebrating 95 years this year.
Wow.
Let me know how, that some races coming along. And, uh, we're also interested in obtaining the property north of the church. I'll deal with the mayor and the trustees and let you know. I'm excited.
And this, uh, trustees, if you all can go back and see, it's, it's a vacant lot, partial piece of vacant lot. Where real estate keep cutting in and so forth, uh, leaving Mr. Dartman by there. Of course, they got a lot to cut down, but anyway, I believe we got over here, probably being, but nevertheless, I know there's, uh, two separate property at the church and trying to acquire this years now. And also to let you know that, uh, on what John, they mentioned, but, uh, indeed in quiet. Let you know, did anybody know that Mr. Chucky and John is really doing it? So much they found out, right now holding, uh, 21 pin numbers here in the village. With the certificates that we have here, that I need the attorney to, you know, check out, make sure all this goes through. Also, we found out the village own, uh, Mr. Muse been telling us for a while, but John and Chucky went into the system. And I think we found out, we probably own another 15 to 20 houses out here. There's been in the village name, the peoples that are living in the houses, they don't, they haven't been paying no taxes because it's in the village name. So it's a lot, it's a lot that we are finding out. And some of these houses are new. Some of the newer houses. Uh, also, one of the businesses out here, uh, is still in the village name. And they want to respond, we're paying no taxes and none because it's the village. So, uh, John, John and Chucky is working on that as well as obtaining some more pin numbers. Uh, also, Mr. Muse and, uh, Mr. Butler is going around putting tickets on vacant lots that's overgrown, that, uh, owners just let them grow. So I know in the city, uh, when I spoke with Mr. Butler, uh, I told him, I said, hey, the city don't let that happen. They put tickets on stuff. So we start taking them, that we can lean on, take them, set up to a developer where we can build a town. It's all about building the village up, making it look good where we did. But, trustee.
What do we do, put in this, trees and the bushes, get taller in the house? We just keep letting it, we just keep putting tickets on it? Can we do something about it?
No, well, uh, what we're finna start doing is getting it cut down ourselves and then we'll place that fee.
Oh, okay.
Over to whoever owns it.
Right.
Yeah.
So we give so much time for them to pass, then if they don't do it, then do you like, everybody else to take it.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, also, and he don't know this, he, he, he don't even know it. Uh, I was looking for us to, uh, probably have maybe like two plurging events out here. Uh, he's, he's one of, uh, that, uh, asked, yeah. He, he, he don't know. He ain't know I want him asking that. I'm, I'm selling it, I'm, what, what you asking? If you can be one of our plurging examples? Of course, of course, I already presented myself. I've been doing it for the last 20 years, I know. So, don't use, you can. Uh, 14th, last week, July 14th.
Yeah, July 14th, that's the second. That's the meeting? We have bad, we have bad, our parrots in June, for July 14th.
That's the Thursday?
Yes.
I'll be on vacation. You'll be on vacation, yeah. Could be so beautiful. Be on the phone. All right. I got you.
Announcements, we have one announcements. Um, I need to speak to the treasurer, he wanted me to talk to the mayor and the board. Have a special meeting on, um, June 27th at 6 o'clock. And speaking about the appropriation for official year 2023. May 1st, 22 to April 30th, 2023. I need to concede till I can post it. You know what date? Monday, Monday. I'm especially just to speak right now.
So you're going to post it?
What, what dates you say?
Monday at 6 o'clock, 2027. Consider just a rough draft, I mean, why just talk about special? We're talking about the public.
All right, there are obviously, we've talked about this before, but there's obviously legal requirements about the posting of the appropriation. It's gotta be days beforehand. There has to be a public hearing with regards to it. This board under the mayor and this board of trustees has done a very good job of being timely about it. I don't know if you all remember two years ago. I think it was passed on 29th of December in 2019. I had maybe nice thing on my ears. But you have all been very, very good about this. And it is something that we need to take seriously because it's a strict statutory requirement. I'm sure the treasurer's on top of it. Uh, we will circulate, um, through, um, well, we'll send it to everybody, but a copy of the statutory requirements, just so you all know what the, um, the legal requirements are. They are in your IML books as well.
So they need a copy of the appropriation on this, I guess what I mean, if you put it in ordinance form?
Yes, we could do that. I mean, if it's already in ordinance form, there's no need to reamount the bill.
No, it's not in ordinance.
Then send it over to us and we'll put it in ordinance form. But the intention is not to approve it on Monday, correct?
Just to talk about, because we have, we have a meeting and we have posted it.
Okay, excellent, excellent. So this is kind of like a budget meeting.
When the meeting is upcoming?
It's Monday, 6 o'clock.
Um, I will not be expected to be at that meeting, correct?
It's the rightest little meeting.
Okay, got it, understood.
I just wanted to consider the mayor, the board, and it's okay, 6 o'clock, you're working. It's a post.
Trustee, what else?
Yes, um, for the announcements. I wanted to let the trustees and the mayor know that we had to postpone the centennial on Saturday. The reason was we were unable to give the nomination out to the residents in the village. I would like to do things at the last minute. So I would like to reschedule the centennial celebration, possibly for the back to school Saturday. So we can have everything on that day. So we will also give out the school supplies to the students going back to school. We'll also have the games for them. Let them know about some of the nostalgic things that a lot of them don't know about, like the spinning top and some of them don't have a pool with pickup sticks or Jack's, or old berry to pass to laugh. So we, we'd like to do that, so that they know, I mean, we're gonna celebrate the centennial. So let's bring those games back on that day because we should have quite a few students coming up.
What day is that?
That, I'm not sure what day it's gonna be on, but that's the day I'd like to postpone it to. So we can just reschedule it on whatever day it is that we have back to school. We just didn't have enough time. Flyers was supposed to be out and then we received flyers. And then we moved down to two weeks or down to one week, and that's just not enough time.
I agree.
So they're coming up here with a date by the next board. We can get this done.
Do we have anything for closing?
Well.
Any?
No, check.
She's on there. Make a motion for that.
Oh, I said.
Trustee Smith? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
And trustee Watch?
Yes.
And the time is 7:30 to clear.